Called order the June ninth twenty twenty five Narrows Town Council meeting. Everybody stand for our invitation and after which we'll have a quick lead. I'd just like everybody to keep Tim Brown in your prayers. He's got some medical challenges and can't be here with us tonight, but he does an excellent job with with all the localities and the write-ups that he does and just wish him the best. Let's pray. Father God, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. The council meeting discussed the needs of the town and Father, we just hope that everything we say and do will be pleasing to you. Father, just thank you for your many blessings and be with those that are sick and in the hospital. Be with our men and women of our military, our police, EMS, fire. Father, they all do such an awesome job. We couldn't, we couldn't make it without them. Thank you again for your many blessings. Amen.
Amen.
My delight is the children of the United States of America and the children of the four which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll open a public hearing concerning the twenty six, twenty twenty six budget. Are there any comments concerning the budget? Any comments from council? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing concerning, concerning the water and sewer rate increases. Are there any comments concerning that? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, we have appointments and reappointments for our town manager, chief of police and treasurer slash clerk. We need to do those separate.
I'd probably do them separate.
Okay. This time, we need a motion to reappoint our town manager.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, we need a motion to reappoint our chief of police.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Then we'll call for the vote. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, we need a motion to reappoint our treasurer slash clerk.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Then we'll call for the vote. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to add, for public records, we got an exemplary group of people that we just rehired. And there are a lot of the reason that things is going so well in this town. At least that's what I think. And I'm just glad to have each other for another year.
Thank you.
I agree with that. At this time, we need a motion to approve the May twelfth minutes.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, in front of you, you have the library report. Any, any comments or questions concerning the library report?
That's a none that does a hell of a job for us. That's all I want to say about that.
So I do have a quick question about it. Just because I don't understand. Says on the circulation desk, zero in, zero out. But then new fiction that says twenty nine in, thirty three out. That that, how they check them in, they didn't go to the circulation desk? I don't understand clearly.
What that means is there are often times books that have kept in the circulation desk and not shown. So those are the ones that go out and they're kept.
Oh, I see.
All right, we'll move on to the parks and rec report.
Terry, are you deliberate to say that you've hired in the role, the role of park attendants?
Uh, yes, except I have to remember.
Maybe somebody can help.
Patrick Bailey is going to help and.
Farming.
Farming. Uh, yeah, I don't know if it's really.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Brian.
All right, farmer's market report.
Farmer's market this Saturday.
All right, we'll move on to the police report. I'd just like to pass on to Benji, a individual commented to me a week or so ago, situation that your group was involved in. And they were very appreciative of the way it was handled and how courteous the officers were. They appreciated everything we did.
Are we going to talk about dilapidated properties tonight? Has anybody got any idea about that?
Um, I'll speak to that for just a minute. Um, Mike, I speak about, I ask about this very aptly. Is there an update on Wolf Street property?
That's the one you and I were just talking about.
Is that the one?
Yeah.
I thought it was. Pardon me? I thought it. Well, that's not at this time, but I'll follow up with Terry.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking. I want to interject something. Sometimes it's me. And it involves being Jim's guys, girls. And it's dilapidated property. That's why I brought that up.
Sure, sure. Back to, back to my question, Mike. I've been asking about this for some time, you know, that particular property. And I asked your colleague last month, and I think he wasn't that familiar with the situation, which I get. But I'm just wondering, how long will it take until that is somehow concluded in your, in your estimation? Because I know, or I think that we've been working on it for a long time.
I mean, I think it's been since we initially talked with this Terry, it's a couple of months ago.
For your part.
Yeah, maybe that's the part I'm kind of, in, in, in Reed, I was going to get an update from him, but he had like a, his father ended up in the hospital. And I wasn't able to get an update for Terry on that. But we do have, you know, a plan of action that we're planning to do. Sorry, to address that.
And that process is underway, John. And it is a court proceeding. And so we have to notify the owners or try to notify the owner. The owner has not responded for a couple of years now for our test. And then we can petition the court for what we want to happen. So it could still be another loss for the result. I would expect.
Uh, another question. Do you know, Mike, do insurance policies typically cover demolition for properties that are burned up? Do they, do they provide compensation to?
They can, depending upon the terms of the policy that the individual has, but a lot of them do not. You know, so you don't, and then you run into the problem of the individual not having the money to clean it up after it burns.
Right, right. Do you need anything further from us, Terry, at this time relative to our interest in that whole subject? That would be a call to.
I've said this to you personally, and I'll say this to all of you. I have not had a lot of time to work on that because of what I've been dealing with, with FEMA. So I apologize that the whole program that we did with regret and all that has taken longer than we wanted. But you're all. Yeah. Oh, thank you. We've got several of them that are still moving, moving at the pace of, it's not a quick process. It's not a quick.
It's not, but yeah, John, I will say this, that when Terry first contacted me about it, we.
About Wolf Street?
Yes. We went through about, I guess, three different options that we felt would be, that would be available to the town to address that property. And the one that we feel like it qualifies for now would be, I think, you know, the quickest option of the three. You know, so that's, that's partly why we're pursuing that.
Mike, I'm concerned about that property in particular for a couple of reasons. One is because it's unsafe. But two, because, and I know there's no trespassing sign on one post or village, but is a safety issue.
Sure.
Not only the idea that it could fall out on the street, but that somebody could get in there or get under somebody blocking this underneath. I don't know. Have you seen it?
It's a nuisance.
And so anyway. Not only a nuisance, it's a safety issue.
Well, that's why I think it's a nuisance.
So I might ask, if you refer to a certain property, do you need even look at it or one that I've already served?
Well, you, I think you just answered my question. As a result of some movement in our staff, I feel like, and I know it's a crap deal, and I'm not going to call it anything else. But y'all are very effective at talking to people and moving stuff forward, whatever it might be, cigarette tax or, or dilapidated properties. But you've just answered it. You're already on some of them. So that's what I want to know, is you're involved and that pleases me.
Yeah, if somebody, if something comes in to Terry, you don't usually give a plan on that sort of thing.
He's, he's been dealing for years with the nuisance problems. So, you know, the dilapidated cars, pop grass, clutter, those kinds of things. What we have added here for the property stuff is if we have notice of violation, then one of our choices for service is for it to be personally delivered. And they are who are personally delivering them now, so.
Well, that's, that's a good thing.
Yes.
That's a real good thing, and I trust that man completely. Well, also, some word tonight. You're going to bring up that stuff about money, right? With Davenport and all. I'll wait till that time.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Benji.
Thank you, John. If no other questions, we'll move on to the financial report.
One thing I did want to point out to you in the financial report that I asked Debbie to add to this report. So this is the first time we've been seeing this, but we will continue to do this. She has always been recording to you the payables and payrolls, which are what they sound like. Payables are things we've written checks for, for that particular month. However, I've been realizing, and we have talked about together, the fact that we are shifting a number of things to be paid by our credit card or their recurring payments that are drawn automatically from our bank account. And we weren't recording those in any of these reports. So I've asked her to add a line that is made automatic or pay, automatic payments that are there to show you that's a significant figure of money that's going out for us that I want to be keeping track of as well on this report. So we've added that line for your information, and it helps me as well to month to month track the funds.
All right, thank you, Terry. We'll move on to the town manager's report. Sixteen percent looks pretty good.
Yes, sixteen percent. Amen. Yeah. I tell you, I'm so proud of our team, you know. Our staff has, has, has gone on it like a duck on the jumbo. And we, as a team, has appropriated the funds so they can do the job. And it's pretty easy to talk to our constituents about some moves we've made. They ain't, nobody got a better report on water loss than Narrows. Nobody. Up the road up here, it's forty eight percent, which, uh, I know I'm rubbing it in their nose, but I'm doing it, I do it at the PSA meeting. Because for so long, you know, we were on the bottom end of stuff. So you gotta, you gotta ride that wave while you're on top. And then when your time comes, you just have to accept it on the other side. But we're doing a great job, and I thank everybody.
The town's made great improvements, we're telling them. Absolutely.
Terry, are you aware of any, any other grant monies or any, any kind of monies that are in jeopardy other than the three hundred fifty thousand that we lost?
I don't know of any right now. Things are changing daily on that front, but right now it seems like everything's relatively secure that we're working on ourselves. The good thing is, we've been talking about grants, is there's quite a bit of money coming to this area because of the lean line. As a matter of fact, Chrissy is going to talk to you in just a few minutes, share with me tonight another EDA, Economic Development Authority, grant that fits perfectly for the wastewater treatment plant, hazard mitigation that we want to do. There's a significant pot of money there we can tap into. So I just learned about that today from Thompson and Lydton and, you know, Todd stepping out of his role at Perrisburg. I know they will make sure that that continues with us because it benefits them as much of war than it does us. We look forward to continuing that relationship.
Terry, I really appreciate your leadership on that. When we're talking about such an incredible expense, we're very fortunate to potentially have this opportunity to get this funding.
Right.
If we didn't have the opportunity to get this funding, I'm not sure what we would be doing. But I appreciate you doing all you're doing to try to capitalize on this opportunity. Thank you very much.
And the result of your efforts to this point has put us in a really good position with the personnel change up at Perrisburg. Because you've been the lead on it, and I've heard nothing but good stuff from people about the way you're doing, handling these meetings and things. But if it had been the other way around, I'd have a scorching bit of nerves with Todd leading. But you've done well.
All right, we'll move on to the public works report.
Yeah, we're getting that. I was just talking about Roy, John. We've got one there.
Thank you all for getting the wireless on and out.
Thank you guys for getting the plan.
Yeah, as usual, they looked really nice.
Thank you, John. Thanks for supporting Sarah, her teammate.
Thank you too, John, for the flags that we got out there on the bridge and elsewhere.
We lost a couple, three, three of them this week, this week. I don't know if we have them or we'll hit it. There's three of them missing.
The flags were great, John Brian. Thank you.
I was, I was going to ask, not that it really matters, the wooden pole, are they, are they secured to the base with a screw?
There's a little set screw.
I figured if they weren't, we'd just take them out of there, but.
Terry, did you, just out of curiosity, did you hear anything about the dog trainer being allowed to use that field?
Yes, RFP is out, and I have talked to him. He's preparing a proposal for us. And DHCD did say that yes, his business would be a fit.
That's good.
So they would be fine with us. So, yeah. Bits are due, proposals are due a week from today at three o'clock. So at our next meeting, I'll have in hand the proposals, so. And that reminded me, I didn't put this on the agenda, but I know, and I asked, I would maybe two of you to help me review the proposals, assuming we get more than one proposal. Anybody that would like to volunteer could help you.
And I did talk to a couple ladies the other day that are planning to fill out the paperwork for a second proposal. We'll see, we'll see if that materializes.
At this point, I've had inquiries from Leon Lawley, serves on the PDC, Goodfellow. He's on the planning commission up at Perrisburg, at Jost County. To whom would we direct him to make inquiries about how we do fireworks? Because I tell you, apparently that's getting to be a real issue with people.
It is. Jeff Spicer is the one that handles them for us.
Okay.
He does it in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Committee.
So have him call Spicer.
Yeah.
Or matter of fact, have him come to Narrows on July fourth.
He could probably do that. But they do that, that thing out there at Newport.
Oh, yeah.
So, but have him call Spicer.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
All right, there appear to be no communications, concerns, or requests from the public?
We didn't approve the consent.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't do it. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
For a second?
Second.
All right, we'll call for a vote. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Debbie. There appear to be no comments from the public. Moving on to PSA report.
The only thing I have there is, because we got a meeting Thursday this week, we had, I shared that. But Todd Meredith has been a wonderful partner, and he is the chairperson of the PSA. So not only losing a partner up there in the town office, we're losing a partner with the PSA. And Todd has been a big part of us being able to get along. It used to be those meetings were awful. And I mean, it, it almost kind of blew us sometimes. But we have worked so hard, and now I don't mind going to them at all. We get stuff done, we work together, and I'm hoping that, that that continues. But anytime you have a change in personnel, it's possible for stuff to happen. And I'm not saying that's going to be or nothing else, but, but I am saying it's a concern for Narrows. You know, you get the wrong person in there that's antagonist or obstructionist, and Perrisburg, you know, is big, big town for this, in this county. But anyway, other than that, I think we're, I think PSA is doing well. I think, again, I just told you, I like to go up there and brag about our water loss. So that's pretty cool. But we'll just, next meeting, we'll tell you how the, the dice went on the replacing Merit. But other than that, my, I mean, you don't have no concerns other than that.
No.
Okay.
We met last month before this meeting and after this meeting, this once again, between.
What's, what's the process for replacing them? I mean, are the general people candidates? Perrisburg will have to choose somebody and nominate them, and then it's pretty much, it's pretty much a rubber stamp from the rest of the members. But we don't get dry nominee, that's why we change. So is the pool just the people that work at the PSA? Or it's a government appointment from the, like, y'all phoning me and Terry, and if they just rubber stamp it. And the, the same will be for Perrisburg. It'll probably be a council member to be straight with you.
But were you guys then at that point appointing the chairperson?
Yes, yes. I didn't understand his question. Yeah.
I thought that's what you were asking.
Yeah, we'll, and we, we do have, I'm glad we talked about this. We got methodology to take care of replacing the chairman. What we don't have, and we're going to have to broach this subject, is a method to replace the vice chair. So, you know, but we'll work it out. I ain't worried about that. I just want to make sure we get the, you know, a continuation of our good relationship.
All right, appreciate that. At this time, Rhett Gum with Optimus here would like to say a few things and maybe field some questions. I don't know.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank you all for having me this evening. I do apologize for not being able to make the last meeting, but it's, it's been a busy few months. As I was just telling Mike and Terry here, my wife and I had a child a few months ago, so our first, so it's been pretty busy getting down the house.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You getting it split? I am finally, yes, sir. Yeah, it took, it took about two and a half months, but we're, we're getting through it. That's great. He's mostly getting through the nice early warnings, but otherwise it's fine. That's great. It's, it's been wonderful, truly a blessing. I, I just want to, I want to thank you all, of course, again, for the opportunity and reiterate what the council said. Y'all are a great team here. I've had the pleasure of working with Mike and Terry and of course Debbie for several months now, and it's, it's been great. I deal with a large number of local governments, and it's refreshing to have a team that I've worked with that's as capable as yours. So I want to thank you all for that. And of course, you know, last time I was here, we had some ongoing issues with our service from Optimum here in the community. And I just want to let you know that we're still here to help with any issues that may pop up, any constituent complaints that we may have, any outages, whatever they may be, I'm happy to help in any way.
You standing there proves that.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate your presence. From one council person, in my world, things has gotten better since you showed up. I don't know about the rest of the crew. We all talk to different people at different times, but again, the fact that you're standing here after the first time indicates that you want to work with us.
And I would add to that, excuse me, John. I've had some personal experience with Rhett since our last, since you visited here last time. And I've heard a lot of promises in my lifetime, and regretfully, I made some promises personally that I haven't yet throughout my life. But one of the statements you made was, or something like, I'll help you if you need help. If there's a problem, give me a call, I'll be available. And I found that to be the case in at least two instances. It's one where Rhett helped, uh, helped a new business in town get established that was having difficulty navigating the Optimum system. And you did that, you got right on it, like right on it, and it was resolved very quickly. Another involved, a personal experience, a service at our, at our house. You got right on it, and people in your organization obviously respect you because they help provide immediate solutions. So thank you very, very much.
It's my pleasure, and that's what I'm here for. So going forward, please feel free to, certainly, chat with any additional comments or concerns. I'm happy to help in any way.
However, the town has actually called Rhett a few times as well for stuff that's gone on here or citizens that have called in to speak. But Rhett has done the same thing of us here as well.
I got texts at you several times, but you've been helpful.
No, it's, it's a pleasure. You know, I, I understand the frustrations that come out of, you know, service issues. So going forward, please feel free to certainly channel with any additional comments or concerns, I'm happy to help in any way.
However, the town has actually called Rhett a few times as well for stuff that's gone on here, or citizens that have called in to agree with something. Rhett has done the same thing with us here as well.
I got texts at you several times, but you've always been helpful.
No, it's a pleasure. You know, I understand the frustrations that come out of, you know, service issues and problems, as deep-winged rain goes, as our internet communication services are our daily lives today. It's certainly something that we don't want to win over family. And we continue to strive to be the connectivity provider of choice for every community that we work in, and just me being here, I think, is a statement to that, is we want to put forward the resources to make sure that we have our fingers on the pulse of these communities, to make sure that they're not being overlooked. And we want to make sure that, we reiterate that point, unless you all know that then we're here to help.
I believe.
Mike, is there an agreement with them that's still in process? Or that? Yeah, you guys have approved it. We, Terry, I think mailed two originals signed by Terry on behalf of the town to see which maybe was it last week, Terry? And they'll send it to you, and we're just authorized per staying there and to sign it. But you'll get two original copies when you receive ritual.
Good.
And we'll, yeah, I think that's in transit right now. I checked our mailbox as well, and see, but as soon as we have an amendment, we'll get it signed by our team.
I'd say I do get the sense that your service must have improved, and I don't see as much growing on social media. I used to be almost all the time, and you don't see that. So definitely get that, I definitely have a sense that you're ready, right?
We're trying our best, and you know, in this part of the world and other remote areas, when you've got to go, you know, over the river and through the woods to get places, it can be difficult to provide the services that we provide. But we, we're doing our best, and we'll keep at it, and we'll keep serving this community as the best of our abilities. And as always, it really helps us to be able to hear from the community leaders and find out, you know, what issues are coming out. Because unfortunately, when you have an organization as large as ours, we can't be on the ground everywhere at the same time. So having our community partners, having our councils, our city managers, our city clubs, providing that input and letting us know about those problems when they pop up is extremely helpful. So I want to thank you all again, because y'all are compelled to be part of this.
So here's a little forward question, kind of, and I just read it on a paper, I made complete mistakes, but I saw where Delegate Ballard took a, made a big initiative, get high-speed internet to these remote areas, but I didn't see Narrows on the list. Is there, are you moving in that direction? Are we moving in that direction? Delegate Ballard helping us get better internet?
I haven't, actually haven't seen that as of today. I'd be happy to look into it. I will say, we are constantly working to improve our networks, constantly looking to upgrade the services that we provide, both in speed and bandwidth.
That was Pembroke Telephone.
It's because of them that we're not included, it's because we're not an underserved community.
But Pembroke Telephone was involved in what you're talking about with Ballard?
See, I thought you were talking about BE.
Up at the Black Gate.
You know BE, right? Which is intended to do just what we're talking about. The deal you're speaking to, John, is done with Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, but the broadband actually in deployment initiative is something that is intended to try to serve the underserved areas like you're talking about.
Yes, sir. And as we continue investing in our network here, I'll be happy to keep you all updated as those improvements come down the pipeline, as we get our equipment. The speed improvement room, we acquired, you know, some of our networks in this area. The previous owners had neglected. And so we've really put in the effort to have our teams, have our equipment, at least a part of that. And so we really stress that, especially here in Narrows and in Giles County. And so we'll, it's going to be that.
So I do believe they're looking to upgrade internet, so I'm going, so are you saying that somebody somewhere with the authority to do such looked at all these internet areas and said, "Man, Narrows got good internet, they don't need any help with it, and there's other people down there who'll help them?"
It has to do with probably people who live remotely enough that they can't get it from a provider. So we're, all of our town limits are covered by their service, so coverage is available. So the BE initiative is to make it available where it's currently not.
So it's not necessarily the quality of the internet?
That's right, that's right.
There's a, there's a, how it goes in, how they determine those areas, for a number of ways. I've always been told, don't do math in public, so.
You know what, excuse me, I want to stand corrected on that. You asked about quality. You know, there is a minimum upload and download speed, I think, that was at least part of the volume of the Virginia telecommunications. And I would expect, I hope, that was also part of BE, where they're measuring speed like you're talking about, and quality. But I, from my experience anyway, Optimum meets the, generally meets the 100 down 20 up minimum that at least was applied to the Virginia telecommunications initiative.
That's correct.
So, is that something, do you agree with that?
Yeah. Did that interest you?
Yeah, I, now that you're saying it's based on quantity or availability, and around the quality, then that makes sense, but I just wondered, are you saying that, yeah, you're guys saying that's good, you got to be upgraded.
Yes. Yeah, I believe the state analyzed, and we have provided some information with our apps and our network information to the state, when that happened, it was a year or so ago, and that was kind of how that happened.
We appreciate you being here, thank you.
As always, y'all know how to hold me, I'm happy to help anywhere, 24/7, 365, I'm here for Narrows.
And it worked so far, thanks.
So, yes, sir, yeah, I'm happy to help. I'm a sander. Thank you, thank y'all very much.
And next on the agenda, Elwood Landmark's got some information for us, the Narrows Fire Department.
Y'all already have, yeah, right? I gave a letter presented to Terry.
We got it.
Yeah, we get it back.
And we were just requesting, I had contacted the previous two chiefs to see if either one of them had approached the town council about a monthly increase, and to my knowledge and their knowledge, they didn't remember ever coming to the council and asking for a monthly increase. So it's been 15, 20 years?
It's been several years. We've got, we're only getting 364.
I think it was 2014, 2015.
I think it's about roughly, so it's been 10 years.
So you need $358.17 a month, is my math right?
So, yeah, so that said, I've read the letter, I figured if everybody else hasn't, I firmly believe our fire department does a lot with the little, and they do everything they can and they work hard for more than deserving of an increase in these fundings, really it only helps everyone, them and us, keeps our town safe, so I don't see any reason to continue to discuss it. I would make the motion that we, and there's no problem with the budget, Terry, there's no problem with this figure, I think, to the budget?
No, I figured out, it's an annual increase of $4,300, so.
Well, let me ask you these, while we're talking about this, and it's been 10 years, you said, David?
Maybe 12. We looked at, what was the amount before?
Three. You know, it hasn't changed since 2017, at least.
Is that enough?
Well, you're asking a funny question.
Well, there's a limit to enough.
These are more reasonably available.
I'm just, I mean, we'll take what we can get, but this is, my treasurer came up with the 30%, so I'll give 30%.
I think we'll make it around none of them and give them as much as they do for us, four hundred a month.
At least $2,000, you think?
Huh?
It can make, it should be able to make at least $2,000 for.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I mean.
Yeah, if we got the money.
Is that, will that work, Terry? We don't want to dig too deep a hole for something.
However, if we give them what they ask for tonight, and then we can reconsider that with the next budget year. You've created a deficit budget that we're running this year, so I don't want to just be giving away.
Now, that's a good effort.
I understand that, and I'll go along with it, but you know, our deficit in my heart and mind is very manageable, but if that's what, you make the motion, whatever it is, I have different questions before.
Is this something, Terry, that you would incorporate in the current budget that's under proposal?
Yeah, you're basically amending the budget.
Is that the reason that your timing is what your timing is?
I didn't know anything about that, but we tried, we thought we were getting it in before y'all get the budget, when my treasurer came to me and said, "Let's try to get this in before the budget," and then when I brought it up, Terry, Terry said, "Oh, we did the budget last month, boy."
Well.
Our timing was not the best in the world.
Well, okay, and I get that, I understand that, and I want to support my colleagues, and I, I actually jump from Gregor's comments, I'm very, very grateful for what you do with the community. I know that Terry's worked really hard on the budget, and so in the, as we have future requests, if you can just try to be mindful of it.
Well, we did, and actually know when the budget was being done.
January, February, it's what I'm hoping.
I'll put that in my agenda.
Thank you, thank you.
So I'm motioning that we honor this request for 30% monthly increase to the Fire Department, which we raised their monthly amount from 1193, 83 to 1552, as well as we commit to maybe looking at additional, I wouldn't bet budget time, or maybe next quarter, however through, a little bit later in the year if that's what it needs to be, but I think that if we can find a little more, we should do that too, because it certainly needs some. But my motion is honor this increase.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion?
So hold on a second, so what are you asking us to do in terms of looking at?
I'm just saying that we honor this, but we just keep in mind that they could probably use a little more in reality, and we're kind of holding off on increasing more because we want to get the budgets, as Terry was saying. And so we just remembered in that meeting around the shoot that, hey, what about fire funds, are there a couple more, is a little bit more money there we can put toward that?
But to clarify, Terry was saying we'll look at it in next year's budget.
Right. Yes. We'll be in a better position next year budget-wise than we are initially.
But the motion is to approve 1552. That's a simple motion, yes.
Okay.
And that's, like, that'll, that's going to get you what you need, until we can do something, okay?
We'll never have that. We're a fire department.
All right, you're doing good, let's get this over with.
All right, we'll call for a vote. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Grigor?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do. Next is Chrissy Straight in the adoption of the New Row Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan. How are you, Chrissy?
Doing all right.
Good to see you.
Good to see everybody. It's been so well to speak. Thank you for making time on your agenda to hear some things about that hazard mitigation plan we've got for you this evening. Yeah, I was thinking about what highlights to share with you, and realized it's been two and a half year process this time around, and we do this every five years, we update the annual plan. So what we do is being to make funding available, and we apply for that, grant it, and start to work, we form a steering committee, we get it all the counties, just states, regional and state, federal agencies, who help us support us and pulling together the information we need, analyzing it, making sense of it, because the goal of what we do is mitigation, and I feel like we're all really familiar with what that is now, I've heard in the lean, that it's not the response, the recovery, it's the, we get past recovery and how can we make it so that next time around, it doesn't hurt as much, or kind of going through. So that's what this plan is investigating, pull all the data, our steering committee needs, we pull together experts on working groups to look at these different natural hazards, and talk about what we're finding, what we can do to make our community more resilient, stronger, through these mitigation actions. We have five working groups, a lot of meetings to look at this, we have a great team at the commission, we've got all the materials. I really appreciate Terry and everybody in the town who helped contribute to pull this together, because it's not just commission staff, it really is every locality that's pitching, just coming together. And what we get to at the end is, we figure out what our worst hazards are, what are we most risked for, let's dig deep into those and come up with those mitigation actions that can then make, then we've got that action plan, and once the plan is adopted, every locality that adopts is eligible to apply for mitigation. It doesn't affect things like the public assistance, or those emergency and response and recovery pieces, it's that mitigation where otherwise it would be harder to do because you're not in the middle of an emergency, and it really starts to come out, things like capital proof and plans, so these mitigation funds come in and help close the gap on the ability to make our community more resilient. I wanted to point out that when we got done with this, what we found out was, severe winter weather, flooding, and high winds are the region's biggest hazards. That's, I mean, I think we all lived through last year and saw that come true for a fact. Wild winter and drought are also concerns, more so in some areas than others, and wildfire can be a challenge to us, and drought, strictly for farmers, but we've got a system that kind of helps mitigate what you might see in drought seasons. But those were the biggest hazards we faced, and I will say, public involvement can always be a challenge, especially in these regional plans, but I think it's been on everyone's radar enough that we had a really good response. But we're not, new people came and visited our project website, which in these kind of plans is quite a good level of interest. We kind of asked them to engage with the information, "Tell us about your biggest hazard, what are things you're seeing in the plan that resonate with what are both missing, we should be talking about," and got great feedback, and when we looked at the hazards, folks just said, "This is what affects me and my property the most," it lined right up with what the steering committee and working group and all those experts said. Data says severe winter weather, flooding, and high winds. So I think we've got a big focus towards prioritizing projects. Every locality is responsible for developing a project list, an mitigation action thing, if you will, and the town that also has that, we all obviously have some priority action systems that we're right now to get funding for, wastewater system, but there are 11 projects on that list, and over the next five years, we can look at funding that comes available and take advantage of the opportunities that come open to make some progress on things that you've identified as important to act on. Trying to think, what else we've got here? Repetitive loss properties, FEMA gets very interested in certain topics each time we go around, and the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP, is a big deal for them, so they always ask us to identify your repetitive loss and severe repetitive loss properties. And these are the ones where, you know, they're probably always the first one, most damage in flood event, and they're only two in the town. So there is funding out there in flood mitigation act program to do things like flood proofing, or if it's severe enough, consider acquisition or elevation, those are big ticket, high action projects, but there are other things that you can do, like drive, flood proofing, elevating utilities to the house to help mitigate those kind of losses of experience. So what else? Highlights, make sure you're all good about that, and then also take any questions you might have. I think I already said it, but adopting the plan gives you a five-year window to access that FEMA money. This time around, we've already had a couple localities adopt, so the clock is running, and we're going to be back to adopt, to the adoption action by 2:30.
So what, like, we don't have no choice?
Go along with this. If you want the FEMA money, this is how you get it.
Do I make a motion? Please accept the vote.
I accept.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Grigor?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy, appreciate it. Next on the agenda, Terry has some information on the wall at Narrows Elementary and Middle School.
So I was approached a couple of months ago about the retaining wall that's on the parking lot side of Narrows, on the opposite side of Narrows Street from Narrows Elementary and Middle School, where the school board was getting ready to repaint that parking lot, and they asked us to look at the retaining wall that holds the sidewalk up on Cross Street. And they asked us to look at the retaining wall that holds the sidewalk up on Cross Street, Wolf Street. And so John and I went out and looked at it at that time. And, you know, our charge at the time was, we're thinking about repainting. Is there anything you need to do to that wall before we repaint? So you don't mess up the pavement. You have to do something. So we went and looked at it and thought structurally it's fine, uh, sound. There were a couple of places that had some cracked blocks and we thought we could pull those blocks out and replace them. And that was our plan. Then we got asked to look at it a second time. And so we did go back and look at it. The wall does mean some, but it's not structurally compromised in any way. So we thought, okay, we'll give the cost of replacing the wall, just so we have that for reference. And that came in anywhere from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars to replace that wall. And so we got asked to consider it a third time. And we're backing down to at ten or twenty thousand dollars. We don't feel like it's a high enough risk for us to go in and, and start messing with that wall. What we do plan to do is to repair the places that we originally identified, uh, that have some cracked block. And because of that, there's some sort of lost street there. And then we'll just continue to monitor that wall. It's in no danger of collapse at all. It's something that the school board was asking us to consider whether we wanted to do.
So, so that I'm clear, you're talking about the wall where they backed the buses up to?
Yeah.
And then the shorter wall on Mary Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's in that corner at Mary Street and then Wolf Street where those cracked blocks are. It's where that, the sidewalk starts to.
By coming back three times, what are they, what are they looking for your response to be that you're replacing?
Well, yeah, no, I think they, they really just wanted to know what we were gonna do prior to them going in and painting, which I would just pay real attention to.
I, I think that's right. Yeah. Tom, I've been involved in this. And I think that one of the concerns for sure is the fact that they don't do, lay down new payment and then have a wall collapse. And then there's damage and payment. And I've indicated, and I hope it's okay, but I mean, I've indicated to them that if we're gonna be doing any work, we're gonna take steps to prevent damage and payment. Uh, but I agree with what Terry's saying and your, your plan for sure. And thank you for all that.
My observation is that if you can get it done for ten grand, you better do it. But that's a big range. I, I agree with your team's assessment. I don't think it's an imminent danger of collapse at all. But I've been involved in this not as near as much as my state colleague here, but we've been involved. And for that kind of money, ten, we need to do it just because we need to do it. But I would be, I would say by court of law, it's, it's, it's unsightly in a couple of places, which you've indicated you're gonna fix. But in my professional opinion, uh, and it might fall tomorrow, but, um, I, I don't think it's something, uh, and there's more than one way to fix that.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I, I, if, if I have to give a definitive answer, I'd say leave it alone. That's, that's where we are right now. I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. As John said, he's been involved in this as well. So I just wanted to keep all of you updated.
John?
Just to clarify, John, uh, ten thousand dollars is just for the wall. That included no, uh, backfill, that included no concrete for the sidewalk, uh, anything like that. Because you're gonna have to replace the sidewalk.
Okay, well, that's why I said it's such a bargain.
It would, that, that is just, is that correct, Terry?
Yeah, yeah.
That was just to give, we got a couple of different questions to look.
Actually, that was just materials we were gonna do.
Yeah, well, one was just for center block wall, which is what's there now. One was for the border stone, the back of the stone. It's a little.
Well, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right. And I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have to worry about. And, um.
None of you.
So, uh, that's the name of that. Favor would you be in these?
Do you, do you need, do you need the repairs in the form of a motion? I would guess not. Okay.
No, I'm just, we soon have to make you aware of what we're doing.
Thank you.
So this is for the next item on the agenda that John's given to.
All right, we move on to a lot of credit.
So we've talked in the past, um, about the fact that our capacity to handle larger unbudgeted expenses is very limited. Uh, that's especially true now with expenses we've incurred in flooding completely. I'm gonna go over those in just a minute. But we also, in the last year, have had some large unbudgeted repairs, um, that have hurt our fund balance. Such as the change orders for the ATS switch at the wastewater treatment plant, which was forty-five thousand dollars. It was unbudgeted. Repairs for the pump rating system at the Virginia Energy Pump Station, which was about thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, and then, uh, the large galvanized lab replacement project that we're underway with, that's about thirty-eight thousand dollars above what we had budgeted for. And that was just for materials for that job as well. So that's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars above budgeted, um, our plan for last year. Had it been only that, we would have been okay. We would have been able to run with that. But we've also had some higher footwork costs from overtime due to the need of slow storms this winter where we had to push it up several times. Uh, we've had some higher police costs when we replaced a part-time officer with a full-time officer's car. Funds there are a little bit. Again, those costs by themselves would have been manageable. But then the lead were all approved. And so for a leading to date, we have paid out a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars for repairs to Camp Success, the Lord's Road ball fields, the concession stand at the ball fields and our wastewater treatment plant. And we are looking at the wastewater treatment plant being probably another million and a half dollars of repairs to the electrical system there. Now, you know, our budget is four billion dollars, so we certainly can't handle a million and a half dollars. But even then, that combination of those a hundred and fourteen thousand of unbudgeted stuff that happened last year. And then on top of that, another hundred and thirteen thousand. And we know that in the next couple of months, we have another sixty-nine thousand that we owe to Thompson England. And to repair the road at Camp Success, uh, depending on how FEMA tells us we can handle that road. So we've got a cash flow problem at this point. So we have talked all along about creating some kind of line of credit that the town could use in examples like this. And we're gonna need to do that. We're gonna need to do that right away. And so I have been working with Davenport, have talked with them about the situation that we can explain to them where we are. And they have provided to you tonight with a proposal, uh, for no monetary amounts yet. But what they are, what I'm asking you are, is for me, you can be to work with them over the next month where they would actually start talking to, to lenders. We'll do this in two stages. We'll start with the smaller of this line of credit. Uh, we're talking there on the order of magnitude of several hundred thousand dollars to half a million, maybe. We're not gonna be our cushion. We wouldn't need to draw all of that. We need to draw enough to handle our cash flow to get us through to the times of the year where our income actually comes in. What I really would like to do is to have us only borrow what we know we're gonna get back from FEMA. And that way it's just a matter of we borrow it, when FEMA pays us, it just goes directly back to the bank we borrowed from. FEMA has said that they will cover the interest costs for this loan as well. That's something that's reimbursable under their administrative expenses. You'll be happy to know that my time will also be reimbursable under administrative expenses. So I have been keeping track of all the time that I've spent working on this so we can, uh, put in for reimbursement for that as well. So the first part will be that shorter term, uh, and more obedient, uh, line of credit, basically is the way I would look at that. And we would do that locally. Uh, we shot that to all the banks in Giles County. Uh, Davenport has some other connections that they might look at as well. And the second fortune that would be to deal with the wastewater treatment plant and what we know that million and a half dollars is to repair. We're not gonna know an actual figure on that until Thompson England has gone through stoning that project and then putting it out for bid. Uh, and then we would get bids back and then we'd know what the actual cost was. Uh, and that's where Davenport would then put that second stage of financing in place. Uh, for us to actually cover the cost of repairing the wastewater treatment. So what I have presented to you tonight is what Davenport has asked us for. They will charge us fifteen thousand dollars to do all the shopping of the, um, digital lenders and then putting together the proposals, working with Mike and Bond Counsel. Uh, in order for this to, to go out and be closed upon once we are ready to do the action. They will come back to you at your next meeting in July and we'll have numbers then for what the actual amount to borrow will be. And we'll get you to approve that separately from what I'm asking you to approve today, which is for us to proceed with Davenport. Basically, you're agreeing to pay them fifteen thousand dollars to get us through, um, handling this show of falls. Well, I've talked to you for months about we need some sort of bridge financing or rainy day, whatever you wanna call it. And, um, that's, that's a part of doing business. And here's, here's my stance on this. I trust our staff and I definitely trust my teammates not to go crazy, uh, because we have access to, to some money. But there's some things and I guess we can talk about it another time. But I said earlier, I, I got my question answered on this dilapidated structure stuff. But I tell you, I feel real stout about attacking that problem. And that, that might, that might be something that this team would wanna invest something in making some movement on them houses. You know, maybe have some money to, uh, to, to get engineering to tear them down. If we can't do it through the normal procedure and we, we hit a longer jam. But, but I really want something to happen on these, these structures. So, uh, and I don't know if you had that in mind at all. I do. And I, and we mentioned this a little bit last month, that one of the things that DHCD is putting out, again, related to the lead funding, is the housing component. And there's a big chunk of money there. Good. That we can tap into for those kinds of things. So I would. We have this, it has to expedite the process if, if it's, it's, it's reimbursable, that money you're talking about. You know, if we see a problem now and we know we're gonna get reimbursed, it makes it a lot easier to spend money. But either way, I think we definitely need to have some monies available for these dilapidated structures.
Terry, you said that under the, uh, the, you know, the terms of the FEMA grant money that, um, they will pay the interest on this line of credit. What about the other costs associated with the loans, such as the fifteen thousand dollars to Davenport? And the bond counsel fees?
Yeah.
Will it, will it cover those costs? It may.
Okay, I'll ask that. I doubt it'll cover Davenport's fee. They, I would say they probably would cover the bond counsel's.
Yeah.
I'm glad y'all brought that up because I liked Davenport, worked with them for years. But the only part of this whole deal that I have a little bit angst with is that number that they gave you. And, uh, I mean, that's right smart money. And then, uh, uh, another four percent, I don't know if they'll need to, to do that anytime. But, uh. Yeah, that's, that's an automatic. Then the, the, they also have in there the travel or. Right. That that would be reimbursable at cost. But the four percent is automatic. So that six hundred dollars.
It would seem to me that your fifteen thousand dollars is an administrative fee.
All right, that's why I placed it. I mean, I just, and, and, and again, it's a reputable good outfit. I've never seen a proposal from them for less than fifteen thousand. John, I think that's very low. Well, you're right, Councilman Mills. We need the money. We need to have some GAAP money. We need to, it's, it's gonna take money to get these projects done. It's gonna take money to really, uh, build a strong foundation. We're looking to build so that we don't need so much money at some point, right? But, um, as far as this fee, it is a good bit of money. But as far as fifteen thousand dollars, but if, if they don't do that footwork and somebody else here is doing it, we're paying them, you know, to do it. And, you know, I agree with you. They, they got us, uh, pigeonholed, but I won't let it go without saying something. And, um, if that's, if that's what it costs to feed the bulldog, then that's what we gotta do. So, uh.
So you're asking for a motion to, to move forward with this?
Yeah. So I will sign that proposal that they have made to you and give that back to the, to Davenport. That's what I would come out to. I make a motion to give you the authority to sign this paper and get on with it. And that will spend the fifteen thousand dollars when he signs it. I set that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Gregor?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for working on that, Terry.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Uh, John Hale has some information about Holston Street.
Uh, Mike Bissel, thank you very much again for your helping carry this resolution. Uh, and I'm asking Councilman Mills, Councilman Gregor, Councilperson Bowles, uh, for your support of this resolution, which is intended to help address the handicap parking issue that's been brought to light, uh, in and around the, uh, Ragsdale Field area. This, um, resolution authorizes, this is my paraphrasing, phrasing what this is saying, authorizes the school board, uh, and the school board on behalf of organizations they endorse to request from our town manager, uh, dates during which we will, uh, agree to close one block of Holston Street directly behind Ragsdale Field for the purpose of establishing temporary handicap parking spaces. As well as providing an opportunity for pickups and drop-offs of people that, uh, uh, may be handicapped. As well as establishing a necessary fire ring. And Edward Lambert, thank you very much and others from your organization for helping support this. And so, um, Mike, is there anything you would add in terms of what we're asking, what we're attempting to do here?
I'd say I think.
Thank you. Um, and I guess I would add to it by saying that, um, this requests a minimum of ten days, uh, advance notice to, to our town manager, by the school board, but also provides, um, an opportunity for some flexibility in case there are unexpected circumstances that develop related to public safety. So I would respectfully ask each of you for your agreement to this resolution.
Well, this motion is going, with, with your sharing with, it's gonna take five minutes. I know the time that you put into this and I'm grateful that you, that you've come up with a, a solution for a problem. And, um, I make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Crigger?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, John. I have a thank you card that I want to read. "We just want to let all that was involved in getting our sewer backflow preventer approved and installed. Know we appreciate your concern and attentiveness to this situation. Every time we call, someone always responds in a timely manner. Thank you so much. I know it was aggravating for us to have to clean our basement every time we had a rain, but I can be thankful that we have people in the town council and utilities that do care. We appreciate everything. Chris Reba, Caden, and Landon Bennington. They live at 402 Belsworth Street."
Well, that's nice.
Yeah, they were a pleasure to work with.
Good, good.
Mayor Spangler, may I make a couple comments before we roll on here?
Sure.
The first is, I just wanted to update you all on Wolf Creek Funds Lab, which you supported us on extraordinarily at the last council meeting. Since that time, we've also received some additional sizable donations from both the county and from Corolla. We've not yet met our fundraising goal, but I think we've had a lot of success at this point. What did you say, Terry?
Very much so.
So, the event will continue to be held on the eighteenth of October. A registration will be opening soon. Terry and Benji and others are working with VDOT for purposes of the road closure that will be required in securing signage and traffic cones and that sort of thing. We will also be using the Code Red, the county Code Red system, to notify people in the immediate vicinity of the race course to try to eliminate the likelihood that people don't get the message about what the traffic flow is supposed to be like and to be on guard and aware, especially during that two-hour time period. So anyway, I just wanted to update you on that and to thank you again very much for your support of that. We will continue to keep you posted on what's happening with that. And then, Terry, just another question for you and perhaps John Davis. You know my concern about the platform and part, and I know that we don't, this one is a platform, and I know that we don't have extra money. Do we have anything in our retainer with Thompson and Litten that would provide us with the benefit of having them evaluate that situation without incurring expense?
So actually, our people have evaluated and they've come up with a plan where they think they can do that.
Okay, okay.
Or they're basically pouring concrete into place of a rock that, the rock that has just rolled out of that.
Into the creek?
Yeah, into the creek. We're not concerned structurally about it, but we do feel like it would be good to put concrete back in that. So what they are proposing to do is basically, when the water is low enough, build a form that would be up against that wall that then they could pour concrete in to pack that correctly.
That's great. I didn't think the solution would be...
We've been keeping an eye on it for a year or two now. It hasn't gotten any worse in the last, with the last flood or anything. Nothing's really changed on the wall, but I feel like it does. If we want to keep it, it does need to have something done. The trouble is, there's no access to it. We can't, we're going to have to have a pump truck to pump the concrete down to a road closure. You can't, probably can't get any flit down there or anything else. It's going to be, it's going to be a pretty good sized job.
Right. I think if we talk to Thompson and Litten, they're going to tell us just what you told us there, so we can save that engineering expense. But I agree with John Hale. It is so aesthetically disturbing, and it might last another fifty years, but all of us know about it. And there's no plausible deniability here. We can't say we didn't know, or, so I think we need to fix it, say.
John, I would assume the water, the water is getting in behind that wall, is it not? Is it, does it appear to be deteriorating?
No.
Anything in behind?
No, not in behind.
Okay, that's good.
Several rocks, one lower rock has rolled out, and then several of the small ones back in there have come out. The other, man, everything else is resecure to be here.
Why don't you give us a cost? And then, you know, having that in hand, we can make an educated decision next meeting, if y'all are all right with that.
I don't think we've got any choice but to fix them.
Maybe think about, and you probably have, about that second more tree, whether that's any kind of an issue.
I'd love to see it gone.
AEP loves to see all them trees gone, but they won't pay for them. That brings up a question, and I'll mention it to both of you. I've been approached by several people that would like to see additional lighting over the parking ride. There's one street light. It's really not on the parking ride property. It's adjacent to it, kind of. But if they could do something with, like a directional light or something that would light the parking lot, this time of year it's really not an issue, but in the wintertime it is darker. If you'd mention it to them, say...
We inherited it. Three issues.
Could I, I just wanted to speak on something for a minute. Last year, you all supported a celebration for students and athletes down at the park. And we had that in July. So I would like to do that with you then. Last year, we did hot dogs and cupcakes. This year, I think it might be easier to do cupcakes and then offer like some door prizes. I know that the New York Elementary Middle School TSA team still will be going to Nationals at the end of the month. So we'll need to wait for that to conclude, but there are quite a few celebrations that the students need to be recognized for all that they've done this year.
How much money you donate? What did you do last year?
Well, so I'm going to try to get some sponsorship for, like, some gift cards and things like that, where we could do like maybe some ten dollar gift cards and door prizes with that, like a drawing with that. But each student would get, their families are invited, each student would get a certificate. Terry printed those last year. And coaches and sponsors were able to get me names, and we recognize students that have placed district or higher, and then the TSA students, we also recognize them.
Nobody questioned you, your work ethic or anything else? I just need to know how much you need.
Okay, well, I'll try to figure that out. I need to kind of figure out how many students and things like that.
Okay.
But what we'll do is, last year what we did is, we created an event, and then I called for, like, friendly people, Facebook Messenger, if I didn't see that they had responded. So hopefully this year I can get that invitation put out a little bit earlier, and some of the footwork will be done like that.
Do you have an not to exceed number in mind that you could tell us now, or?
Well, I'd like to see if I can get some sponsorship with some of the gift cards.
So next month's meeting's on July the fourteenth. That's got to be cutting pretty tight.
That's why I'm asking now.
On funding.
Everybody trusts you. If we gave you ten thousand dollars, you still going to go out here and bump people.
Have a nice event.
That's right.
And what I'll say is that...
Have a wedding.
That's the truth.
It don't matter how much you have, you're still going to go out here and hit people up. So I'm just trying to not cut it so thin.
We've got a special meeting on the sixteenth. Can you get us a figure by then, you think?
Yeah, I definitely...
Which is next Monday. I don't know what we gave...
I'm going to be zooming in next week. I'll be at the beach, but I'll be zooming in.
Do you have any idea what we contributed last year, Terry?
We didn't contribute anything last year, other than our time to do the printings and stuff. It's not going to be a huge cost for us. She's actually asking for gift cards for door prizes, not to get every child.
Right.
It's just for door prizes. So, you know, we're not looking at a lot of money.
Can somebody say something? I mean, how much is not a lot? Is five hundred dollars enough? A thousand? What do you need?
A thousand not to exceed, and then you...
I make a motion, we donate a thousand dollars not to exceed.
I'll say it. Any further discussion? We'll call for the vote. Ms. Hale?
Get our lanes down there and stuff with that kind of money.
Ms. Bowles? Mr. Crigger?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, I want to say something before we get into something else. I made that man back there a promise, and I know you're working on it, but I want to hear him to hear it from you that we're going to take care of that business over at Fire Off.
Yeah, so John and I have talked about this as well, repairing the siding on the tower there. We've got to use a truck to be able to do that. So John has got that on his to-do list. We'll get to that as soon as we can. I know you mentioned the mowing and stuff, which we, yeah, I think, pretty soon after that. And then we got a trip hazard at the walkway at Ridge there.
And the mowing, did you mention that? And I can't hear. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The mow behind the wheel?
Yeah, the dirt. I didn't know that part was going to be done.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Announce the possible town council appointees.
Yeah, so Mike and I talked after the last meeting when Joe announced his resignation. And since we appointed John Hale for his role here, the rules have changed a little bit about how we have to handle that. So Mike confirmed for us that the process needs to be that at tonight's meeting, we will announce the three candidates that each of you or several of you have proposed, three possible candidates. We announce those candidates tonight, and then we have to wait a week before you can actually make a decision. And so because we have a budget here or budget approval schedule for next week, I'd like to do that at the same time as well. So we'll announce the three names, which are Alicia Lane, Greg Lee, and Casey Clark. They're all proposed by one of you. So those three are the names that will be considered. Next week, when we hold our budget approval meeting, we will actually go into a closed session, and you will be able to discuss those three candidates. This gives you an opportunity to hear from the public as well about the candidates that are proposed. Someone may want to say something to you about those folks that proposed. So we give you an opportunity to hear from them as well, and then next week, we will make a decision, which one you'd like to...
Well, first of all, we're blessed to have three very qualified applicants. I mean, I'm just stunned that we got three people wants to get in this mess. But we do, and they're all capable, and they're all, their character is good, but I guess I talked to Alicia Lane and I talked to Casey. So I talked to Alicia first, and then Casey talked about it at the planning commission. So that's my two victims.
And we've already obtained the writ of special election back from the Giles County Circuit Court, so that is set for November fourth, twenty-five for your special election. So your interim appointee will serve, you know, from the point of their qualification until that time.
Only thing, I think we have three good candidates. I think we'll certainly get one from these three. I just want to be clear, and we're saying that we have proposed these candidates, and yeah, I agree with these names. But I'm under the impression, because if I wanted to run for town council, like I did, I'd say I'm going to run for town council, and they, they paid for it. But I'm under the impression that this is open. Should someone from the town in there simply walk in and say, I'm interested in that position, then we would vote. I don't think they have to be proposed by us or anybody else. I think they can come in and say, I'm interested, you got an open seat, and I want to be voted. I think that's true. True. I think we just need, if that is the case, if I'm wrong, that's fine. If that is the case, people just need to know that. So, hey, we didn't close anybody out. Here it is. Say, I want to do it, we'll vote yes or no. Or we'll vote on this group, whatever group that is.
Planning whoever you choose to appoint, you've got to make the appointment within forty-five days.
No, 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 I know. But right now, we only have three people. We're only going to vote only on these three people. What I'm saying is, it's an open council. It's open to the public. It seems to me that should someone say, I would like to add my name to that list, okay, well, now we've got four people we'll vote on, and we vote on them. And that's how it works.
Yeah, I don't think that, you know, I don't think the statute would prevent you from, say, considering other names that may come up between now and, say, next meeting. I'm not sure it addresses...
I'm just saying, I don't think that I have to propose a name necessarily. I just think it's open to the public, like the elections, and then it just happens to be...
The way that, you know, my understanding is for reading the statute is, is that some people may come forward on their own, some people may be proposed by you folks, and you talk to them and they're interested in serving. Whether the people come forward on their own or whether it's people that you all propose, all the names are announced.
Right, right.
And you have that week waiting period before the actual...
I just wanted to be...
So you're not limited to the three.
Right. I just wanted to be clear that we are not keeping anybody out. If it's open, and they want to step up and say, put my name in the hat, then that would be fine.
And to that point, whoever we appoint is only going to serve until December third.
Right, right.
And they will have to run for Joe's open seat, which will be running for a one-year term, because his term ends in March.
I just don't want anybody to say we're keeping people out, the town and the council or any of that, because it isn't. I think it's a... Well, if I say that, they're speaking an untrue truth. I'm not giving you a short answer, man. But anybody that would talk to me is going to get their shot. And I was, I just was in a position, because of other roles I serve with the town, that they knew about it. So I guess the only thing we could do in the future is to do some sort of advertisement, but I have a stance on that, too. These three people had enough interest and paid enough attention to what was going on to want to be involved.
That means a lot.
It means everything. But anyway, I'm not contesting your comments, but I don't think, I don't think we begin to mistreat nobody. No, I agree with you. I just want to be transparent. Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you for that information, Terry. Next on the agenda was the approval resolution of the mitigation plan, which we've already done. So we'll move on to consider approving the engagement letter for Robertson Farmer Cox Associates.
We've taken care of that, too.
No.
We have an auditor and a pre-autor.
Oh, okay.
Two different ones, again, they're a proposal to escape within what we have budgeted, so we're asking you to approve of them, the pre-autors.
No, the auditor. Ron from Ross, you've already covered on that, so it's a pre-autor. This is Corbin Stone, who comes and presents you the audit every year. This is his...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And these are the same folks that have done this for years, that direction. We're pleased with their services.
Yes, very pleased.
I think I mentioned the approved engagement letter from Robinson Farmer Cox Associates.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Ms. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Motion carries. We need to consider approving the increase for the water and sewer rates.
Tom, can I ask a question at this point or not?
Sure.
Terry, I might have asked it this last year, and I apologize in advance, if it seems like round all day. In looking at the schedule you provided, there is a difference in the in-town versus out-of-town commercial water rates. There is no difference in the in-town versus out-of-town commercial sewer rates. Do you know why that will be?
Oh, yes, because the surface of, well, the water we're paying for, we're buying from the TSA, the sewer we're implementing currently, so we don't make a distinction between the in-town and out-of-town.
Okay, so, and I guess we do not determine that there is a significant difference in processing cost, or whatever your term is, when it's coming from out-of-town.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that, water increase is just a fad. We're not trying to stack money up here, we're just trying to repair and anodeleating system, is the way I'm looking at it.
That's true.
And we just, it's not like we're, we're making money here, or, or trying to squeeze anybody, but if we're gonna continue to provide a service, somebody gotta pay for it, and it, it has to be the usual. It's the way I'm looking at this, and if, if I'm wrong, somebody strike me out.
Well, I agree with that, I agree with that, and I want to be clear with you and the rest of the council members about the reasons for my question, and that is, I want to make sure, I hope, and Terry, I trust your judgment on this, that we're capturing our costs reasonably.
Absolutely.
And at the same time, we continue to provide an advantage for residents of our town-
Yes.
-that are, I think, perhaps, maybe this is not right, but they may be paying a higher tax rate than if they were to be living out of town.
Oh, I guarantee you they're paying higher taxes.
And so I think for the higher tax rate, we need to continue to think about deliver value, and so that's the basis.
Well, that's a good point.
Well, we've, we've already proven with, with JJ's involvement and others, that by finding, being proactive to find these leaks, it's saving the town money, considerable amount of money, and if we weren't doing that, the, the 10% increase, maybe 30% increase, just to pay for the water.
That's absolutely the case, Tom, I, I'm just suggesting, and this is not stated very eloquently, but I don't think there ought to be a free ride. I don't, I don't think out-of-town ought to be riding on expenses that are being borne by in-town.
And that's why the cost is different.
Well, it, why it is for the water.
Right.
Yes.
Now, wait a minute, I'm real confused now, the water rate is the same in, no, it's-
Out-of-town water rate is higher than in-town.
But it should be.
But the sewer rate's the same because there's no additional cost to process it.
Basically, it's all labor and not material.
Yeah, no, I agree that out-of-town ought to pay more, that's just, you know, that's being fair, so.
I'll try, I'll bring it up next year.
So is there any additional discussion? If not, we need a motion to approve the sewer, water and sewer rate increases.
I do want to, so are you looking at the rates out-of-town sewer rate, and are you saying that's what we really, I think?
John, I don't know if I'm suggesting, I want to be real careful about suggesting any type of increase at any time, but I, I want to make sure that we're being consistent in terms of the way we look at this and the way we administer our taxation policy. I mean, one could infer that, but I, I, I want, I want, I'm hesitant about saying that I'm looking to do that. Terry's explanation makes sense to me, but as I think you would agree, my first priority and allegiance is to the town, and I want to be fair to the town, does that, you understand?
No, I agree with you, I agree, I think, I think, I mean, it seemed like to me, or again, is that for the water, the water's the material, and then the administration is the labor, and then sewer, we just have all labor and no material, and that's why the rates are the same, and then, and I agree with what you're saying, and that, you know, we shouldn't bear, the townspeople shouldn't have to bear the burden if it's not fair.
Right, right.
And, but I think that's a little late in the game, in some way, certainly.
And at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but, but if, if council wanted to raise the out-of-town sewer rates, it would require another public meeting, and it would delay the approval of, of this down the road somewhere.
But it's a little, it's something to consider.
Maybe this is better looked at next year.
Let's, let's do what we gotta do tonight, and next year, not make John Hale, make it three years he's asked, please. So we'll, we'll deliberate in our budget meetings, and, but now we're, we're in a, up against the wall, so we, you know, we need to go ahead with this.
So is there a motion to approve the increase for the water and sewer rates as presented?
I ain't gonna run again, I'll make the motion, and I'll say it.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Ms. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We need to schedule a date, well, we've already done that, it's next Monday.
Yeah, I want you to officially schedule that I will propose that we meet next week at 6:00 on the 16th, to do the budget approval, and we could consider your appointment for the vacant council.
I was out of doing my very best to be here, but I just scheduled a public appointment for a big job that day, so I'm not sure you're gonna finish at 6:00.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion that we meet next Monday to approve the budget and to consider Joe's replacement?
Is everybody else dead, flat, set? Because we gotta be without, well, he can, he can vote if-
Well, just to, just to bring one thing up.
Wouldn't be a time.
Say, are you pretty confident you'll be able to just play the vote? Because you gotta have three.
That's what I was getting at, Michael.
Because we're one short, and you will, you may not be available, and we gotta have, gotta have, not counting, not counting you.
Yeah, yeah.
If I did it bad, Mike, can I, can I call in?
Sure.
Okay, I mean, because I think there's a limit.
You can participate remotely, but it's, I mean, I don't, I don't think you use that that many times, but it's either 25%, this would be for personal matters. Now, for medical matters, you can have unlimited amount of, you know, remote participations, but if it's for a personal matter, like say a vacation or something like that, you can do it, I think, 25%.
Okay, all right.
It's the top, yeah, 25% of the total meeting is for you, so.
I, I'm just trying to get from, not the west coast, on the way to the west coast to here that night, that day. So I wanted to make sure if I needed to call in, it was the road, so. But I planned-
I mean, it's sort of a zone. Can you, can you all possibly do zone?
I can say. I'm ready to see my two cell phones to do it, we can do it by phone.
Does it make sense to schedule it a different day?
I'd rather try to do it next week if we can.
Well, I mean, a different day than Monday.
I mean, I'm planning for that job to be finished by then, but there's just no guarantee it, Tom, right, but I, I kinda can't put it off.
And we understand that.
Well, if, if Mr. Hale can't make it, you could get on the phone for no longer than this is gonna pay.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
So I think-
Or can we do it on Tuesday? You haven't advertised.
The only date we advertised was tonight, because that was the public hearing, and you can't adopt your budget until at least a week after you hold your public hearing. So, you know, Monday or Tuesday, or, or Sunday.
Is there, is there a conflict with, with doing it the 17th instead of the 16th?
Not for me.
Not for me.
And, and by the way, guys, let's say you showed up, and you did have a quorum, you could always, you could always adjourn the meeting until the following day, or some other day that you pick.
That's good advice.
So, so in other words, there's always that, you know, option.
Let's go with the 16th.
So if it works, it works, if it doesn't, you know, you-
Well, we all agree with 16th, for, I, I just, if, if we can stick with that, that's better for, I think for- Let's do the 16th with the, if, if problems arise, we can do it.
Mike, would they just recess the meeting if there wasn't enough, was not enough, or would you just adjourn and, and?
I agree with you, recess would be better.
I think we've done-
Be a better term, yeah, if they wanted to do that, and then, because we would have already advertised for next Monday's meeting.
Wait, so is there a motion, is there a motion that we meet the 16th to consider these two, approving these two items?
So moved.
For a second.
Sure.
Call for the vote, Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Ms. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
All righty. Next on the agenda is information for council. You've got the board of supervisors, PSA, there weren't any, New York Regional Commission and the Fire Department monthly report. Are there any questions or comments concerning any of those? If not, I would assume we don't have any reason to go into executive session. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Ms. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Yes.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned.